We wrote you off. Okay. Okay, good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting for Morro Bay. This is Tuesday, July 16, 2019, and we're at the Veterans Memorial Building at 209 Surf Street. We have -- Susan is missing tonight, but we have four commissioners here, so we have a quorum, and I'll call the meeting to order. Could we please observe a moment of silence? All right, thank you very much. Please, next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise, face the flag. Ready, begin. Okay, do we have any announcements by our planning commissioners here? Okay. This is the time we set aside for public comment. This is usually for items that are not on the agenda, and we're beginning to do -- if you have any wish to speak to items on the consent calendar, will now be a good time to do that. So anybody wishing to speak to items not on the agenda or to the consent calendar, please step forward.
Good evening, my name is Betty Winholtz. It's a -- I'm not sure if my comment is a question or a complaint, but having just come from the beach and gone out on Toro Lane, I saw that the Frye's Second House is fairly elevated, like there's been fill brought in, and it's almost like three feet above the properties to the west and to the south of it, and I don't remember your granting them to elevate that house, and I don't know that you remember, and I don't know that Mr. Graham remembers, but I want to register a complaint about that, if that's appropriate or to ask the question.
No, that's appropriate, thank you very much. We'll -- any other public comment at this point? Okay, we had an issue, we had a correspondence on the consent calendar. Do -- I guess we'll pull that item for when we get to the consent calendar then. I was expecting somebody to be speaking on that, so. Okay, so then Scott, do you have any comments on the question?
Was that all the public comment that we had?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't off the top of my head know what the, you know, foundation, whether there was fill being brought in or not, or what the scope of the project included as it relates to that, but happy to look into it tomorrow when we get back in the office.
Okay, great. And then also they, I noticed they had done a lot of retaining work, so they actually dug out the site, so it seemed like there was maybe some geotechnical issues on it, and I know on building, before they can pour the foundation, they're supposed to get a survey estimate, a survey of the height that the foundation tops. So I'm sure, so hopefully we'll find out some answers. Thanks, Betty. Okay, we have no presentations, so we have a consent calendar. I saw that there was an email from members of the community for, let's see, which one was it? It was for the Panorama, so it was A2? So A2, so I believe we'll pull A2. And does anybody else have any issues with any, anything else on the consent calendar?
I did have one question.
Okay.
Scott, if you can look at number 10 on the project list. This may have been on there before, and I may have missed it, but that particular one is a parcel where we've got three parcels that they're trying to do a combination into two, and I was wondering, is that, is there a special case there? Because we were trying to avoid losing small unit capacity, I thought, in our housing element.
Okay, I'm gonna have to step in. I've got property adjacent to this, so you have the --
That is three identical lots that are 5,000 square feet each, and the owner would like to have two lots, so it actually, they're larger than our minimum lot size when they're completed, but it required a two-step process, so it first had to merge two of the lots, and then lot line adjustment to move the line in the middle. So each lot will be 7,500 square feet.
But I thought we were grandfathering smaller lots and part of our housing element and things were, was to encourage smaller development instead of combining things into larger lots. Whether it's --
I don't think so.
Three would have been smaller, more affordable units than two larger ones.
But we don't have anything in our policy, adopted policies, that prohibit this. This is actually consistent with the city's general plan and zoning ordinance, but -- Just give me one second.
Also, our new minimum, well, our new minimum lot size is gonna be 5,000, so these are gonna be two larger ones.
Yeah, I don't have anything to add beyond that.
Okay, well, it's just a question. So if there's no more comment on that, I'll ask our chair to return to the room. Allow him to take over the chair again.
Okay, I needed the exercise, thank you. Okay, so on the consent calendar, we have items A1 and A3. Any discussion? Motion?
I'll move that we approve the consent calendar agenda items A1 and A3.
I'll second it just for convenience. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes 4-0. Okay, so we had a correspondence on A2, and this was on Panorama. So.
So internally, we're working through that, some of the changes, some of them are, you know, just correction of spelling for names, and so we can fix that, but there was a substantive change that was requested, and we're looking into that, so it'd be fine if you wanted to continue this item to the next meeting.
Okay, I think that would be wise. Okay, great. Do we have a motion to continue this item?
I'll move that we continue agenda item A2.
I'll second that motion. Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes 4-0. Okay, moving on to item number B1. This is case number CDP 19-008, and this is the site located at 3200 Beach Comer Drive in Morro Bay, and so can we have a staff report?
Yes. Thank you. The site is irregularly shaped, 8,500 square feet, has an existing home that was constructed in 1972. It's Zoned R1, Special District 2.8, and it is adjacent to an unnamed drainage ditch that runs along the northeast side of the property. The drainage ditch is in a 16-foot wide private easement with adjacent property owners. And this map shows, the blue line shows roughly the location of the drainage. Recent changes to the drainage ditch resulted from a new home that was approved at 110 Orcus in 2015. The home design included a new retaining wall along the drainage ditch, and the retaining wall was approved as a minor modification to the approved planning permit. So the picture on the left shows the house under construction, and this is approximately July 2016. It shows the construction of the retaining wall, and the photo on the right is July 2019, and this shows the new home at 110 Orcus on the right side and the subject property on the left. Biological review of the drainage ditch. This is from Rincon. Originally, they did a report in 2013, and it related to the proposed home at 110 Orcus. It concluded that the drainage ditch is not a wetland and not a blue line stream. It also concluded that the drainage ditch area does not meet the criteria to be considered an esch. This photo shows again that house and the drainage ditch view from Orcus. The biologic review was updated specifically for the property at 3,200 Beach Comer in May 2019. They confirmed that it's not a wetland and it's not an esch. The drainage ditch has been disturbed by recent altercations at 110 Orcus, and that's the construction of the retaining wall along the north bank, east bank. Bank stabilization project proposed will be subject to review and permitting by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, FEMA, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, Regional Water Control Board, and the City of Morro Bay. And we've provided for, in the conditions of approval, it's provided for recommendations for a construction period, actually, sorry, that's the biological review report, provided us with recommendations for the construction period, and those are included as in the conditions of approval. The need for bank stabilization project. So this is a map from the report that shows the yellow area is the valuation area, the blue hatched area is Army Corps of Engineers jurisdiction, and the green area is California Department of Fish and Wildlife. The purpose of the project is to reduce bank erosion, to reshape the vertical bank that's degraded from water flow impact, and to stabilize with materials that'll allow natural vegetation, and that's gabion baskets. And this, I've got a red arrow that kind of shows the change in direction of the water, and that's precisely where the work area is. So where the water is coming and changing direction, it needs to be stabilized to stop the erosion. This is a little lesson on gabion baskets for the bank stabilization. There we go. It's a tiered design, and they are galvanized wire baskets filled with rocks, and they are designed to protect slopes and streams from erosive forces of moving water, and allows a smaller rock size than if the basket didn't exist, and allows for quick revegetation. This shows kind of a drawing of how they are assembled to protect a bank on the left, and on the right shows revegetation in process. Neither of these are the subject site. And staff recommends that the planning commission approve the coastal development permit 19-008 by adopting Planning Commission Resolution 17-19, which includes the findings and conditions of approval for this project.
Okay. Do we have any expertise, communications? I actually, on visiting the site, I actually talked to one of the neighbors, and they were in favor of the project. Okay, questions for staff?
Are there any assurance, I recall that there's a tree there at the southeast area where the work's going to be done, pretty substantial tree. I just wonder if there was any assurances that the tree wasn't gonna be disturbed.
I actually was there, and I don't remember seeing a tree in the work area, but
Well, it might be out of the work area.
There is a tree closer to the corner of Mendero Way.
I guess that's what I'm afraid to.
Right.
And so that tree's not, as far as you know, the tree's not.
As far as I know, it's not, it's not going to be damaged, but the biological report does show where the work area is, and it will be monitored.
Jesse.
How far are we in the process with the Army Corps and the Fish and Wildlife?
That's the responsibility of the applicant, so we impose the conditions, and they're responsible for getting us evidence of either permit requirements, review requirements, or no requirements.
And they haven't done, they haven't?
No.
Okay.
No, they'll still have to go through a building permit process, and we'll need to see those reports for that approval.
Nancy, for the folks that aren't familiar with the site, the effluent from the site spills onto the street and into kind of a gutter next to the street, so it's not as if it's a channel that continues to the ocean, it's kind of interrupted by the urban streetscape.
This isn't a large photo, but this is from the section where it leaves Orcus, so it travels across the dead end of Orcus, and then through this channel under the bridge, and then into a drainpipe.
Right, it gets a little bit more esch-like after you've gone underneath the overpass. The drawings suggest that part of the work is actually being done in the right-of-way?
That's correct.
And so the city has no trouble with the engineering?
They would need an encroachment permit.
Okay. The other thing is, I saw, and you had it in your presentation, the slight slope of the, I think they called it, they called it, I think, it's a special engineered soil or some kind of enriched soil that they wanted to put on top of the gabion wall. It's in the illustration you've got there on the left, but I didn't see that in the actual construction drawings. So that is part of the scheme, is to put that kind of soil back on top of the gabion zone?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause it's not in the drawings that I saw, the technical drawings. And I guess the last thing was, you mentioned that the opposite parcel had a modification to the design that we approved. Do you have an idea what the design was that we took a look at that allowed the modification? I couldn't dig that up fast enough when I saw that.
I don't recall that it had the wall before.
I don't think it did either.
They'd been looking at various solutions, you know, down that, and there was some issues between the neighbors coming to agreement on certain things, and then this was the solution that they ended up coming forward because they couldn't reach agreement with the neighbors. The easement's private, it's a private drainage easement, it's to the properties that are affected by the drainage, and so it was, there was some complications getting down that road, and then eventually just moved forward with a solution that was located on this property.
Okay, that's all I've got.
Okay. Scott, how big is the drainage basin that feeds this, this, not creek, but trench, or what are we calling it?
I'm not exactly sure, the project's conditioned to have all the engineering studies to reflect what that is. We looked at it originally at 110 Orcus, I just don't recall, you know, what it is off the top of my head.
Okay, 'cause one of my concerns is the added, the increased flow rate out onto the street, the Orcus Street, and then how it affects downslope for the state park there, so.
So yeah, that was all reviewed as part of the, pretty much from 110, and will be reviewed as part of this. The project's conditioned to provide hydraulic analysis related to, you know, the improvements. The 110 Orcus project, water came out of that drainage as it came onto Orcus and actually extended up onto the property across the street, and so they angled the wall and the improvements to push it further down slope onto the street, so it wasn't going up onto the property across the street, improving the drainage situation and the erosion issues that they were having from larger storm events.
Okay, just, this is from memory, I talked to Nancy a little bit earlier today about this, on the Orcus project. I didn't remember the vertical retaining wall there, and I also didn't remember the vertical cast-in-place retaining wall at the, in the city, in the right-of-way, in the closest to the street. Also, the deck that's perched atop of that retaining wall and stuff, if, from my memory, and I couldn't find, I couldn't find the plans in my files, 'cause it was quite a while ago. The, you know, that garage was considered a basement garage, 'cause it was completely submerged on three sides, and I don't remember having a parking spot next to it, and then redirecting that creek flow. So I'm concerned that that has created part of the problem, then now requiring this solution, which is then gonna impact other properties further down site, so.
So all of them pretty much were reviewed by the city's engineering division, they had qualified stamped engineering studies to address the improvements. The exact, you know, approvals for 110 Orcus, I don't recall off the top of my head what they were exactly. I know they did some improvements related to the walls and how water exits that onto Orcus to direct the drainage from being more downstream or down Orcus as opposed to being, the way it came out before, it came right out across the street and right up onto the property adjacent, kind of came burned up and then went down and was eroding portions of the driveway on the property across, is my sort of recollection of it.
Yeah.
And they put improvements in here to stop it from doing that, and to redirect it, and again, this was all reviewed by the city's Public Works Engineering Division.
It seemed like, my recollection, and this is still a question, that that was supposed to be a battered retaining wall system, so that as the flow rate increased, the volume capacity would increase of the channel. The way that it's been built, it's a vertical retaining wall, so as the flow increases, the volume is minimized, so therefore the rate of flow will increase dramatically. So that was my concern on the change that happened after it passed through us, and to me, that seems like.
So again, I'll note that they went through the engineers, required engineering studies, they went through Army Corps permitting, they're going through FEMA permitting, I'm almost done with that at this point for the letter of map revision. So all of that's been looked at by all the requisite agencies. I don't, I mean, beyond that, I don't have the study sitting in front of me, so I can't speak to a project that's not in front of the board today.
Although this, this project, it's the adjacent, it's the opposing bank, so it directly affects this project.
Which was experiencing erosion pre-development of the 110 Orcus property.
Okay.
There was actually, you know, there was actually a slope filling on the property, you know, I noticed when I first went out there with Cindy Jason, the planner that was on the 110 Orcus project, when the lot was vacant prior to permitting.
It just seemed from my memory, and like I said, I don't have the plans, it just, once again, it seemed like this would not have been a minor modification, that it should have come back to the planning commission on this project for such a, for such a drastic change, proposed change, and that's what, and that's why I'm just concerned here on that, so.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll move on from that, sorry. Sorry. At this point, we will open up the, for public comment. Typically, we give the applicant first chance to speak. Please, please come forward, state your name.
Hi, my name's Daniel Satello, I'm the project civil engineer. The applicant couldn't make it today, so I came in his place. So I was wondering if you had any questions about the project I could possibly address?
Okay, we'll save questions for after the public comment, and we'll call you back up, so if you have a statement to make, that'd be great, otherwise, we'll continue the public comment, and we'll call you back up after the, the other people have a chance to speak to this.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you very much. So anybody else wish to speak to this item?
Betty Winholtz, I want to express my appreciation for the point you're making, Chair, because that was gonna be my comment. It seems to me that this change was major, not minor, should have come back to the commission because it did create an impact on a neighboring property, and I think those are the kinds of things that need to come back to the commission, so maybe a lesson learned that you need to, maybe have some foresight, I'm not sure how you can predict, but you need to be aware and make sure that staff brings back things that are fairly substantial. Therefore, I'm very much in favor of this because it's not the property owner's fault, it was because of something done here.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Please come forward. Okay, then, seeing none, we'll bring the applicant back up. Thank you. And question for the applicant. Michael, did you wanna approach this?
I just, again, with the technical drawings, I didn't see any reference to the, to the fill back on top of the gabion to help encourage the growth, regenerative growth, that is part of the project, correct?
At this time, I don't have anything specked out related to that, that'd be more of something we'd have to take a look at.
Okay.
Jesse. I'm sorry, I, I didn't quite understand that last response. So there is going to be soil put on top of this basket design? You're just not sure who's going to do it, or what will involve, or am I wrong?
Well, the, kind of the big item with doing something like that is, before I spec out some type of loose sediment to be placed on top of the gabion baskets, we'd have to run it by Regional Water Quality Control and make sure that it, you know, it's environmentally, that it would be suitable for the environment, that way we're not adding any pollutants to a waterway, so there'd be a decent amount of agency review to approve the final design.
So this part, what you're saying is, you really can't be certain based on what other experts, when they weighed into the issue, whether they will allow it or not?
Yes, that's correct, at this time, we're not sure.
Okay.
Jesse? No, no questions? Okay. I saw one of the specs that there were, there were a recommendation not to use plastic products, webbing, as sediment retention. Is that true, so that?
No, that's not necessarily true. I do have a geotextile fabric specified, and that may have some plastics in it, so that'd be something that we'd have to take a look at, too, if, you know, one of the agencies makes a comment that says they don't want any plastic materials placed in the creek bed.
Yeah, 'cause I'm concerned about plastics in the ocean, and would that be behind the gabions, or would that be on the creek floor?
It would be behind the gabions.
Okay. So is, remind me, so is there a condition to revegetate the slope?
I don't recall a condition to revegetate the slope, but we do have, I believe we do have a condition to minimize the area of disturbance.
Okay. Now, with the vertical adjacent wall and your retention system here, what is that gonna do with the flow rate, both upstream as far as baggage and potential flooding of upstream sites, or downstream with increasing the flow rates and runoff into the state park area?
So it won't increase the flow rates, and the outlet here controls, so there'll be no impacts going upstream due to the fact that the stream, it outfalls onto Orcus.
Okay.
So I did find the landscaping, there's a condition, planning condition number seven, that is to, it's a landscape restoration plan, it also addresses if any trees are removed, that requires an arborist report to assess condition of the tree and determine species quantity, size, and placement mitigation for the tree removed.
Okay, great, thank you.
And then there's a And then there's a condition number five that requires a engineering analysis of the effects on the flow of the stream from this improvement.
Okay, thanks. And then, is there any appreciable sand transport from sedimentation to the beach from this, this drainage, as far as beach replenishment?
I, I do not know. I have not studied that. So I'd be unable to answer that question at this time.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Any other, any further questions? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your...
Thank you.
...your answers. Okay, so closed public comment at this point. Bring it back to the commission. Who wants to take a crack at this? Michael?
This is one of my pet peeves, I think. I, I love these little tiny, whatever we're going to call it. And I think the whole problem here is because we don't call it what it is, which is a seasonal stream, that we treat it as an engineering problem. That's why engineers look at a vertical retaining wall and say, oh, it's a satisfactory retaining wall, and they don't look at it as an environmental enhancement to the neighborhood. So we end up having this, what I think, wall that wouldn't have passed this commission, excepted across the street from this one, which I think is a very nicely designed wall. This one only works for me if we do the revegetation as, as a requirement on it, because that's what we have. That's what should be there. It should be habitat. It should be something that welcomes the flows that come through and, and has them bubble and gurgle and nest there instead of sending it down like the LA River. You know, I think we're, we've had a, an attitude about channelizing some of these things that's not productive, and I, I think that's why we've got this problem in the first place. And we're lucky this person wants to come forward and correct it now, because I think the, the street probably would have eventually had to have work done to it there, too. And if I look at this, I didn't go back and trace it. I've been gone and didn't have a chance to, to go look at it. But there's a pretty large drainage, at least on, on Google Earth, on the north side of 101. And it looks like that may be one of the origin points of the drainage coming down through here, which means it's draining a sizable point, sizable amount of, of material east of 101 down through this area. So the fact that it goes out on the street means there's no kind of clean connection. We don't have a, a nice path through there. But if we had a large amount of funds, this would be one of those things, I'd love to see the end of that street created such that this was a wonderful termination to what should be a, a seasonal stream that's habitat. And I think when we talked about the general plan, one of the things we talked about was trying to protect these areas. So I'm, I'm very concerned that when we see something that looks like a minor permit modification for an engineering purpose, we go back and check it against some of the larger aesthetic criteria that we're looking at for trying to maybe recapture some of these areas. Because I think we've lost that site to the other side. But this one, I think, was done well. I, I thought the, some of the concerns the chair had about the, the sectional qualities where it, where it's increasing, the ability to show these potential, you know, revegetative things, I'm, I'm fine with what the applicant has chosen to do. But I, I do want to raise a concern that Ms. Winholz and the chair had, too, about, I think some of these things are an asset that we, we let get away from us if we're not careful.
Jesse?
I don't really know how to start, so I'm just going to kind of jump in the middle of this and see if it makes sense. But I, I don't even know if I have enough information to make any kind of educated determination as a planner, so wearing a planning hat. I don't, I just don't know that I, I have that, I'm out of information within these plans. So it seems like an engineering problem and a biological problem, which we have biologists on the job, we have engineers on the job. It seems to be that, it seems to lend itself to a, a solution that is viable. This seems like a viable solution. I'm a little concerned about velocity dissipation as it gets towards Orca, and I'm assuming that the stormwater folks will address that in their review. So I don't know that I have terrible issue with the proposed remedy, but I agree that we probably should never have gotten to this point in the first place.
Well, you know, I, when I went to see the property, I was struck by the contrast of what exists there currently in terms of this vertical wall and what was being proposed. And I, and I, I wondered why the existing wall was there and why they weren't doing something that seemed to be a little bit more environmentally responsible back then. And, and now I hear that it may not have been what the commission originally intended. And I just think that in these kinds of projects where, you know, the neighbors are sort of intimately connected in this project, unlike the typical thing that comes before us where someone is building or adding on to a, a neighboring lot, this really, in complicated ways, impacts the adjacent property. And then we have, you know, and the bulk of the decision-making is really reports that haven't even begun yet. And, you know, and I have an opinion, I'd like some second additional chance to confirm that what we wanted done was in fact done, and that there wasn't some unanticipated departure that from an engineering standpoint was necessary, but which from an aesthetic point we wouldn't like. So I, I think there needs to be another look by this commission. I'm not quite sure when, but certainly after some of these reports, I think, have been formulated. That would be my thought.
Okay. I have some, some specific problems with this project, although I don't find it objectionable. Most of, most of my issues are with the adjacent project and how it was developed after it left the commission. And like Michael mentioned, this is a resource. And we've been, we've talked about, you know, environmental repair. We've talked about trying to repair a site. And a, you know, a great architect once said that you, when you develop a site, you repair the site with the building. And the project that we originally saw on Orca's was, was a well, was, from what we saw, was, was a well-integrated project with that, with that creek that was behind it. I'm going to call it a creek, whatever it is, drainage ditch, whatever you want to call it. But what developed out there now is a heavy-handed, with, a heavy-handed solution without any benefits that I see accruing to the community, especially next to the state park. This, you know, I walked back up in there, you know, and, and it's a, you know, past the, no trespassing signs and stuff. It's a little, you know, a little magical spot that, that I'm sure if I was eight years old, I would be down there, you know, rummaging around for, for crawdads and frogs and, and everything. And now it looks like a freeway, a freeway storm drain, you know, on the one side. And so, so to get to this, to get to this project, I don't have a problem with the project as it states, except I would have, would add conditions that some of the things that should be studied are, you know, watershed commitment to this, you know, addition, how much watershed sheds into this. The flow rates that, that will be in, you know, will be increased here, and that's one of the things that is studied. The effect of this upstream and downstream, so we take, you know, takes a look at it holistically. Also, if there is any sand transportation to the beach that exists now when it floods, you know, this is part of beach replenishment that I didn't see any mention of, mention of in here at all. And then also, I would like to see included in that engineering study is, is the, the realization that we, that the storms we are going to be getting are going to be shorter duration, more intense, and drop more rain because of the extra, because the oceans are going to be warming. So not just present day or past rainfall totals need to be studied, but we need to have, we need to be looking forward 20, 30 years on this, the life of this project, of this facility, to, as best we can to anticipate the future rainfall rates. So in, in that, planning condition number five, if we, if we go forward this, I would like to have that included, those items included in, in the studies that were done on this project before it's, before it's approved in the building, building phase. So, okay, those are my concerns. Where do we want to go with this?
Well, I mean, I'm going to have to assume that we are going to get hydrological studies during the stormwater...
The project's condition to, requires all of those. There's public works condition to, requires the hydrology, the hydrologic study and the requirements to comply with FEMA requirements. They have to go get all of the permits from the other outside agencies, Army Corps and FEMA. They'll be looking at, you know, the letter of map provision process as well. All of that goes into looking at the, you know, hydraulic modeling of the, of the creek and what impacts the proposed improvements have on it. Would also note that there is no study that suggests that the improvements on the other project at 110 Orca's were in any way exacerbating the erosion on the subject property. That's what's said, but that's, there's no substantiation for that. There's actually substantiation for the contrary to that.
Okay.
Through the studies that were done for the 110 Orca's project.
Okay. Scott, I'm not as concerned about the hydrological studies on that, you know, as much as I am about the, the aesthetic and the, and the natural habitat that was...
I understand.
Was, was, was lost there.
Understand. Completely understand.
And, and I'm assuming that the various safeguards that are part of the resolution were also in existence in 2015 when, when the wall was built down the other side, and that really didn't safeguard the damage to the aesthetics. So, you know, shame on me once, shame on you once, shame on me the second time. So we should take some precautions.
Well, and it seems to me this is all about allowing a property owner to protect their own property that is constantly eroding. I mean, that's kind of what this boils down to, is are we going to not allow them to protect their property from a situation they didn't create?
Well, I'm not saying that we disallow the project. I'm just saying that it's conditioned so that it becomes a benefit through, through proper design rather than a detriment which, you know, which seems to have happened.
I really wish we could have heard from some of the detractors, because I, I mean, I don't really see a whole lot of, I don't see a whole lot of negative to this project. I was kind of curious on what, what the, what the, the argument against it was.
Well, then, I'm not arguing against...
Well, no, no, not you, but the other people that were against the project.
Well, I didn't see any comment of anybody against it, and the neighbor that was upstream that I talked to, she was all for it.
Oh, okay. I misunderstood.
We had one letter from the owner of 110 Orca's who just wanted to make sure that they were conditioned with all the same conditions that he was.
I see. I see. I misunderstood. Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so how do we want to handle this, guys?
I'm, I'm just concerned. I appreciate that Ms. Hubbard put the, called our attention to the landscaping one. I, I don't know if it's strong enough to, for, I, I just was initially hit by the first image of the, of the restored side. And I'm, you know, they, they have these techniques in the cloisters when you walk through some of the dunescapes there, that they haven't grown back. And you see the exposed cages and things like that. I'm not opposed to using the cages, but I, I do think the enhancement of putting the landscape back because of the ground on top of the cages is, is kind of a critical thing. I think it's just exposed. Without that, we have another potential eyesore.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, can't, can't we have this project come back to us at a point when, you know, we have the assurance that the tree won't be disturbed, that, an assurance that there will be soil added on top of these baskets, some sense of what sort of a vegetation design is going to go on top of the soil, and just to kind of a, you know, a more, a specific notion aesthetically what it's going to look like?
Well, if we do that, we're going to have to, we're going to have to either condition the product, project come back in the consent calendar so we get a second look at it, or, or basically put the project off and have them do all the studies and have them come back to us at a future date. Continue the project to come back to us at a future date. And this, this, you know, this project is actually time-sensitive also. I don't want to be held, held hostage at that, but it is a factor that we should consider.
Well, I have the assumption that, given the amount of erosion that's occurred in the last few years, that the scour, the velocity and the scour aren't going to allow for any kind of soil or sedimentation or any revegetation to take place. And we're going to be looking at those, those gabion walls for, you know, prosper, forever. And, I mean, it beats a, an island block wall or a port and place wall, but I mean, it's still not a, I, I have the assumption that we're not going to see vegetation there.
Well, there's vegetation there now, as I walked up.
But once we get the gabion walls, and I don't think we...
I think the vegetation comes from the top down, not the bottom up.
Pretty much.
I think the scouring does take care of the things that would come from the bottom up. But I think these are, these are sort of like terraces that grow and allow things to creep down. And I, I think that's a different type of thing.
Okay, so, so Scott, help us out here. Can we condition this to come back to, to us after the studies as a final project on a consent calendar?
I don't, I'm, I'll be honest with you, I don't expect, I don't understand what you're expecting to see. Finalized studies, the studies that are required for this project, yes, we have to review them in, in conformance with the city's drainage policies, the city's FEMA requirements in, in municipal code. But ultimately, they're going to be doing a lot of other work that, to get through the FEMA process with FEMA, with Army Corps of Engineers. And that's all after they've gotten approvals from us. They're going to go get those approval, you know, they're going to go through this approval process, and that starts them down the road to doing all the engineering studies that they need to go do. I'm not sure, you know, what the expectation is there. A lot of this, because we're not the regulatory, regulatory authority that deals with improvements in the stream channel, they have to do what Army Corps and FEMA tells them to do. So I, I'm not sure what you're looking for. That landscape item, not a problem. We can make sure we get landscape in there, and we have it along, we have landscaping across the top. We have the condition that does that. We can make it specific to the gabion wall. Happy to do that. I don't think that's an issue. I would imagine, and short of there being some issue with one of the regulatory agencies about the material, we can certainly make sure that happens. And if you want to see it, when we get the finalized design, I'm happy to bring that finalized design back to you on consent. That's fine. But the other pieces, you know, involve a lot of other agencies...
Right.
...that we can't override. So I'm not sure where we're going with that.
So Scott, my concern is the, you know, and we've got a, we've got an example staring at us in the face, where it, you know, our process fell, we, there was chinks in our process somewhere. And so that's my concern, because we didn't have the final say on the design, on the aesthetic aspects of it, not the technical aspects, but the aesthetic aspects of it. And that's where, that's where the system fell down in, from my, from my point of view.
But you have it for this project.
But we have it for this project, but we, once it leaves this desk, then, then we lose, we lose that. That's what happened with the last project, with the Orca's project.
So, I mean, it's not like I was sitting here listening to you. I was. If any major changes come back and they're saying, no, you have to use some sort of other hard armor ring, I'll bring it back. I mean, that's, that's no problem.
Yeah, but that didn't happen on the last project.
So where, so where did, where did we fall down? I, I'm, I'm not trying to be combative, but I'm trying to understand. Where did that project fall off?
We went through a minor modification process to add the walls. We noticed everybody within 500 feet of the project. That was the, you know, that was the choice we, that was the, the route we chose to pursue with the proposal. You know, didn't have necessarily the same concerns that the commission has related to the area. Certainly heard those... the same concerns that the commission has related to the area. Certainly heard those now. I mean, you know, wouldn't be expecting us to do something similar in the future, you know. We have, you know, direction and what the desire of the commission is. So I wouldn't be taking any changes that were significant to this project and doing them at a staff level, given the amount of concern and interest you have in the project. I mean, that's just, that doesn't make sense. I mean, meaning if there was a change that was proposed, I would say, okay, it was substantial. It wasn't just, you know, moving it over a foot or two. But with the solution, meaning, oh, no, we're not doing the Gabian wall now. Now we're doing, we're proposing a regular wall.
Cast in place.
Cast in place, concrete, you know, whatever, concrete block, something along those lines. That would be a deviation and one that the, the four of you unanimously have expressed concern about and would want to see as a major modification. So you would see that as a major modification. You know, I, I listen to you guys carefully when you, when you make comments related to things like this. And I, and, and we convey those concerns related to projects that come forward because some of this stuff doesn't necessarily, isn't necessarily, you know, well spelled out in the city's policies, general plan of coastal program, zoning code. And some of it is nuanced. And that's, you know, how this commission interprets our policies and what concerns you have. And certainly that can change over time with the makeup of the commission. But we always convey, you know, when new areas of concern come up, we always convey that to the public as it comes forward as best we can. You know, because it's a little bit of a moving target sometimes, but I mean, sort of depends on what comes before you. So.
Okay. I, you know, I feel comfortable enough to condition the project with the understanding that any, you know, once, once again, any modifications or minor modifications and do not affect the aesthetic quality and the habitat quality of the project. Because I don't think this is a bad project. I'm not, I'm not railing against this project as what, as what, as the process had happened before. So.
Understand that.
Yeah. Okay. So where does everybody else stand?
I'm in agreement.
You guys good on that?
Yeah.
Okay. But what I'd like to see specifically spelled out in the facility design, and I'm not sure if it would be in the engineering reports, but I would just, so I'm double checking, is on, you know, in the planning condition number five, to, to study sand transport to make sure that there isn't any change of sand, of sand transport from the existing condition to the future condition, you know, as far as transport to the beach. And then I'll take your, you know, from what I understood, the hydrological studies will, will study the whole drainage basin.
They're required to.
And will study the upstream effects and the downstream effects.
They're required to do all of this.
Okay. And then our public works will, will look at the discharge of this, of this creek onto Orcas Street, correct?
They look at, they look at all of those things, correct?
Okay. Well, those are my specific areas of concern.
And the landscape would include the tops of the Gabian.
Correct. And I'm happy to amend that condition to be more explicit on a landscape condition. Happy to do that. So there's no question about what we're expecting. I think that's, that's fine.
And of course, that'll be revegetated with native, native vegetation. Okay. Okay. I guess, somebody want to give a shot at it, or should?
I'll, I'll cut it. I move that we, let's see, that we approve Resolution PC 1719 with respect to coastal development permit to CDB 19008 with the amendment with respect to condition five concerning sand transport and a specific amendment with respect to providing vegetation over the Gabian baskets.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay. Call the question?
Commissioner Lucas?
Hi.
Commissioner Barone?
Hi.
Commissioner Graffia?
Hi.
Chair Lohr?
No, I'm, I'm sorry. Like a continuation on that. One of the things too was a signage. You know, there's, so I'd like to stop the process right here. I apologize. I missed one of my notes. There is signage. There's a chain across it with a no trespassing, you know, you know, violators will be persecuted, kind of a sign that's just hanging and it's all rusted and stuff from both sides of this drainage, from the drainage ditch. So I just want to make sure that any signage there is approved by the community director. So, so can we change the motion in the second on that? Do you approve, Joseph?
I'm in complete agreement. Probably no need for me to repeat my recitation. I'll bring that in. We can include that.
I apologize, guys. Is the second concurred?
I still second and I still vote aye.
Okay. So, and then to me, yes.
Thank you.
I apologize, guys. That was. Okay. Okay. Moving, moving on to item B2. This is MIN 19-06. It's a text amendment to the Cloister subdivision tract 1996, Miss Mixed Use Area G-2. Okay. Staff report? Please explain.
Please explain. Okay. This, this is complicated. I've tried to break it down and make it uncomplicated. This is a site overview, and the change affects the Cloister subdivision tract 1996 is shown in, outlined in red in this map. The view corridor is shown in yellow. The esch is shown west of the blue line. And the residential areas are shown as north and south cluster areas, and that includes all land outside the view corridor and outside the esch. Following years of public hearings and discussion regarding the best use for the 84.4 acres known as the cloisters, on October 24th, 1988, the Coastal Land Use Plan, Land Use Policy 0.6, was amended to reflect the resulting changes. The portion of policy 0.6 related to the density allowed is as follows. Density credit derived from the overall area designated as coastal resource residential land may be transferred to the areas outside of the public view shed, and residences may be developed at higher densities within those areas. Policy 0.6 also stated that no residential density accrues from the esch area. And the amendments create a new limited density residential land use category that is coastal resource residential, and it allows up to two dwelling units per acre. The land use designated, created for this area is mixed use area G2, and it was specifically for the 84.4 acres that became the cloisters. This map is showing another alignment of this parcel that shows you the esch area, which is 21.6 acres, and the 62.8 acres available for density transfer. So why the amendment is necessary? The 1988 Land Use Plan Amendment is very clear. The density credit derived from the overall area designated as coastal resource residential land may be transferred to the areas outside the public view shed, and residences may be developed at higher densities within those areas. And so from this map and the previous map, that's the non-esch area, is all zoned coastal resource residential. So the, all of that land can be available for density transfer to areas outside of the public view shed and outside of the esch. The 1989 Land Use Amendment added language to reflect the agreement with the property owners for 120 lots that were specifically proposed as residential in this proposed subdivision. But it should have been clear that this was not the total calculated mathematical allowed density. And the language added was such transferred density will allow 120 residential units in a clustered residential development clustered to the north and the south of the view corridors. In a subdivision proposal in 2007 and a potential sale in 2013, the California Coastal Commission recommended that a land use plan amendment might be necessary to clarify the total density allowed. Again, in 2018, the subdivision of Lot 124 was delayed, and the Coastal Commission concluded that the best remedy would be to amend the land use plan to clarify the intent for the allowed density. And now we get to the math. The total site area is 84.4 acres, and it's divided into 21.6 acres of esch, 62.8 acres of CRR land use designated land that's available for density transfer. So here we have the math, and we start with the 84.4. We deduct the esch area. It results in the 62.8 that's available for density transfer. The density transfer is up to two units per acre, so multiply that by two, and then deduct the density created already in the 120 residential lots in the cloisters. And the remaining density credits that have not been used is 5.6. In our city policy, we require fractions for density-related items to be rounded down if they're below 0.95. So the 5.6 would be rounded down to five. And so that leaves five remaining density credits that haven't been applied to a site. So the text amendment change, the language added by Land Use Plan Amendment in 1989 to reflect the proposed development is such transferred density will allow 120 residential units in a clustered residential development clustered to the north and the south of the view corridors. Though shall be no transferred density by reason of the subdivision map recorded in or about 1015. And you'll see what, oh. Guess I took too long to read that slide.
It's that math problem.
Okay. So this is that same statement on the top half, and I'm showing what the changes are. We're changing, and actually, this is missing a word. So the first line should read such transferred density will allow up to 125 residential units in a clustered residential development to the north and the south of view corridors. There'll be no transferred density by reason of the subdivision map recorded in or about 1915. So the change to the 1915 is just a correction of an error. When it was typed, it was 1015, and that was a really long time ago. So the, the text amendment really is just correcting the math. The 1988 amended, amendment to the land use plan was very clear that all of the CRR land was available for density transfer. And then later it got muddied when they put 120 units because they were discussing what was the agreement between the then property owner for the subdivision they were going to apply for. So staff recommends that the Planning Commission forward a recommendation for approval of MIN 19-06 for a text amendment to the Coastal Land Use Plan by approving Planning Commission Resolution 15-19, which includes findings and conditions of approval for the project.
Okay. Thank you. So questions for staff? Jesse?
So what prompted this discussion?
The, the proposal last year for the development of Lot 124 was for a six-unit subdivision. It met all the criteria for the cloisters lots and was appealed. And the Coastal Commission thought that they could approve a immaterial amendment. But in thinking about the past failed subdivision and the failed sale, I think they thought it was not clear in the way the land use amendment was written, that the density on the site is more than 120.
So we're talking the fire department parcel?
Yes, correct.
Okay. That makes sense.
Joseph? So, so ultimately, does, does this mean that on that particular, I'm, I'm trying to figure out what the practical applications are. There are going to be five, five more buildable lots in the track than earlier anticipated. Is that correct?
I, I don't think it changes what was originally intended.
Right, right.
So originally intended, it was just math that resulted in that number 125. And then I think the 1989 text amendment made it unclear to some people because it was just talking about what that owner was applying for.
So it's essentially setting the record straight as to what the ultimate density should be and was agreed to be. I, I get that.
Correct. It's the math.
Yeah, yeah. Michael?
So Nancy, the, the five units does not include the state mandate to potentially have secondary units on the site. So in theory, if they had lot coverage correctly, you could have five plus five secondary.
The cloisters, I think prohibits accessory dwelling units.
Okay. That supersedes the state mandate?
Unclear at this point.
Okay.
So if they're allowed, they could have granny units there? If they're not allowed, they still might be able to have granny units there?
And there was a subdivision plot before the one you were talking about. I think the original subdivision plot was a cul-de-sac after the first version from.
The 2007?
Yeah.
It actually was very similar to the one that was reviewed last year.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So magically, five more lots appeared.
It's, it's not, it's not magically. It's just, again, it's, it's the math.
No, it's the math. I understand, Scott. I'm sorry. I was trying to, a bad joke. I apologize. So we've got, there's, there's the transfer credits for five more lots that, that can be applied to Lot 124. So what is the, what is the underlying credit or allowance for Lot 124 prior to the credit transfer?
So, so we had discussed this sort of ad nauseam with Coastal, and Coastal was fine with us moving forward initially and gave us an email to that effect. I think we even showed it to you at the Planning Commission meeting. But it allowed us to move forward with the subdivision the way that it was proposed. And then the issue came back. I think they, I think new folks that were, that got involved with the appeal when it went to Coastal pulled all of the files out of their storage and went through them all versus the planner that we were dealing with previously who had left the Coastal Commission staff. And what they found was some of the sort of unclear record that was related to out here. And they saw the math, too. They're like, how come this is 120 units? Well, this, that subdivision went through the city and then went on to appeal to the Coastal Commission. And the Coastal Commission actually issued the coastal development permit for the 120 lot subdivision. And even in the Coastal Commission's approval, they said, hey, if you do something else with this fire station lot, it should probably be residential units. Didn't really say how to get there. I just mentioned it. When we went back and looked through, you know, the record, this is what we found. We found that there's five extra additional units of density applicable to the project based on the densities that are allowed there. It's weird that you have, I mean, maybe at that time, you know, and for a very long portion of the negotiations with the developer, that was always going to be a fire station site. So they just didn't include it in the density. That might have been the case. Unclear to me whether that was the case or not. And so they were always just talking about what was left over minus the fire station lot. But when the fire station lot wasn't going to develop and there was density associated, we checked. It said, yes, there is density still left over. And that's the five units we came up with, with the math.
Okay. The Cloister development was argued over for 17 years, as far as I remember. So it, I'm incredulous that a math error of five, five available credits weren't discovered until, what was it, 25 years later, 30 years later?
I don't know that it wasn't discovered. I think it was, I think they were, they'd been arguing over this, as you said, for 17 years. I think it was, I think they'd been arguing over this, as you said, for 17 years. And they'd come to agreement, and this is, I mean, I'm reading between the lines a little bit, but I think they came to agreement on a proposal. That proposal fit within the density requirements we showed you, was actually less than the total amount of density that was allowed. And they said, okay, this works. Here's your 120-unit subdivision. And they just wrote the whole thing into the LCP. That's fine. It just doesn't speak to what happens with the remainder of the density that's out there. And it wouldn't have become an issue had we built a fire station there, but we're not. And so then we're saying, well, it can go there. And then you have to go back and say, well, what's the allowed density left over? And that's when this came up. And Coastal was telling us like, hey, it says the 120. Kind of is unclear, you know, like, why didn't it pick up these other units? And you should be explicit so everybody understands what's happening so the process is more straightforward. And so that's why we went through this process of the math. This doesn't have anything to do with what's going to happen in the future. What is the map going to look like that comes back to you? How many units are going to be built? That's going to be up to the discretionary process that would come back. This is simply, this is the amount of density that's left.
Okay, let me ask a question on Lot 124 then. I know that's not before us right now, but hypothetically, because you have five residential credits, density credits, that can be transferred to 124, what is the underlying residential density that could be put on there prior to the transfer? Is it going to be five total or five plus one that was allowed? You know, one could, because there was a lot there before. So does that give them six residences or five residences?
I think it's five. I mean, there's five left that's included in the area that can be developed into residential.
Okay, even though there is...
It's included in the 62.8 that created the density that's transferred.
Okay, even though there is an existing lot there that's outside of the View corridor that the density is being transferred to?
Correct.
From, okay, okay. So the, okay, thank you. I guess we don't have an applicant here. You've already had your say. So at this point, I'll open it up to the public. Anybody wish to speak to this item? Please come forward. Could you drop the mic? Just pull the mic closer to your mouth. It doesn't pick up. Could we get some technical help here, please?
I can't struggle without that. This chair, commissioners, staff. My name is Dawn Beatty and I live in the Cloisters. First, a little history and no math, just practically speaking. When we were here last, you voted 41 to 1 to approve the six lot plan for the owner of the lot to move forward. I'd like to put you that or the one behind you, whichever one shows better. Since the architectural, the Cloisters Architectural Design Review Committee, called them ARC, so I don't have to keep saying that, of which I am a member, had truly not seen the plans, I, on behalf of the ARC, appealed your decision to the city council. After hearing our appeal, the council delayed their decision to enable time for the developer to present their plan to the ARC. This is what our appeal wanted. After what appeared to be a good meeting between the owners, developer, and the ARC that began with us asking if your lot was even on the table. We were told no. The developer laughed with smashing items that they agreed at a meeting they incorporated into a final submittal. That final submittal never happened. I won't speculate as to why that didn't happen, but suffice it to say it didn't. Let me point out here, the ARC did not approve the six lot plan. Although we never saw revision that included the items discussed at a meeting, we still had serious concerns about parking. Okay, that's mystery. Now where are we today? We are here to ask you to deny the city generated LCP. When a member of the ARC spoke to Coastal Commission staff prior to this LCP, they were told a four or five residential lot increase was being discussed. So we figured a four residential lot increase in overall Cloisters density was in play. We have not seen any plans for development of five homes. So we do not know if our parking traffic concerns could be mitigated. Even with all the design plans, the original Cloisters developer made to include driveways that can accommodate two cars for each house, parking issues can still be a problem. That picture, it's the top and the bottom were taken last weekend and the weekend before. One of those houses in there was sold as a rental. And over the weekend, you can kind of see what happened. It was not for a three-hour party. That was actually, the whole weekend, it looked like that. I am horrified to imagine seeing that on a daily basis when entering our community. Without plans to show there's won't be a problem with a five-lot subdivision, all we can go on is our own planning, which tells us five houses is still too many on that little lot. Please deny this LCP so it can be rewritten to increase the Cloisters density by four homes, not five. Thank you for listening.
Great, thank you very much.
Hi, Steve Stevens. Well, we, as the design committee of the Cloisters representing the interests of 120 owners, appreciate the opportunity to speak to this proposed change in density. Once again, the process is now flawed and nonsensical. The previous submittal was done improperly. And again, we are starting off without a proper protocol. And now we're being blindsided. I think your comment actually was apropos as to where does this come from? This made-up number? To suggest a heretofore 1988 document, heretofore unheard-of 1988 document takes precedence over all the subsequent hundreds of thousands of hours of discussions, negotiations, and subtle agreements, agreements that the entire community have come to rely and accept, is absolutely outrageous. Nowhere in any of the 30 years of previous documents is there any mention of this new manner of establishing density. Not a word was ever spoken of this tortured math. Such an approach belies transparency, the facts, and fairness. This is a lot dedicated to the city as a fire station site with a 1996 final tract map that around 2006, the city decided not to proceed. No mention has ever been made of this outdated, 30-year-old document being the Holy Grail. The design committee deplores this lack of communication and the basis for the number of allowable lots. Now, the Coastal Commission planner, Sarah Carville, who's been very responsive to our questions, never approached this as a math calculation, but rather indicated a discussion with the owner and a new submittal of four or five lots, determined after sufficient communication and feedback from the homeowners of the Cloisters. That's where it came from, that number. Not a made-up number of, a document from 1988 that they backed into. The Morro Bay's previous city attorney, Ann Russell, cautioned about the actions of the city and the staff and their invalid manner of retroactively changing the rules. There is no schematic submittal for us to comment on which reflects this density that can accommodate the protection of the neighborhood character specific to the Cloisters. The City of Morro Bay's Coastal Land Use Plan Chapter 11, Protection of Neighborhood Character, speaks of one of the priorities of the Coastal Act. I'm just finishing.
Yeah, that's fine.
As a protection of the community and its neighborhoods. This is an establishment of the policy, this is establishment of policy to preserve the unique character of the varied neighborhoods in creating higher-quality vision environment. On conclusion here, the Coastal Commission requires the approval of the design committee for any submittal. We will honor our responsibility to oversee proper application of the design guidelines and with strict attention to traffic safety concerns, parking continuity, neighborhood conformity and compatibility. Respectfully, we request and we believe a maximum of four lots would suffice. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. Next, please. Please pull the mic towards you a little bit.
Yeah, okay. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I hadn't said anything yet. I'm trying to find the front of my document. Hi, my name's Melanie Williams-Mahan and I'm on the Cloisters Design Committee. I've lived in the Cloisters since 2003. I drive by this lot multiple times a day, the lot on San Jacinto and Coral. It is a difficult corner and also the only entrance and exit from this neighborhood of 120 homes. Coral and San Jacinto are the main exit from the beach tract and the only exit from the Cloisters. Many, many people cross Highway 1 at San Jacinto on foot, on bikes and strollers, on skates, skateboards, and cars to access the beach. I would like to see a traffic impact report on that corner. I'm concerned about the driveways in this plan that are not being used as driveways. And there's a street that is being used as a driveway, but there's no room for these cars to park. The old plan that we saw had no actual driveway that fits the description of the Cloisters Design Committee, the project. This project originally had six homes and the design committee expressed concern over the parking plan. We were told last September that the developers would send over a revised plan. We have seen nothing from the developers and heard nothing from the city regarding our input for this project. Nancy did send us a letter regarding this hearing. We can't approve what we can't see and the city isn't communicating with us. The design committee was set up to monitor and approve new plans after the 17 years of negotiations. We can't do our job if we don't get the information needed to make decisions. We have a responsibility to our neighbors and the city has a responsibility to its citizens. There might be a traffic impact report, but we've never seen it. Higher density means more people and cars and this project does not have the approval of the Cloisters Design Committee. And this amendment to change the density of the Cloisters is something that we feel is being pushed to accommodate one developer. The staff on this project has been less than forthcoming with us and I really hope you look further into this project for us. We just haven't been heard and we live here and we love this place and we just, thank you for letting me say my piece.
Okay, thank you very much. Please, next, please.
I, Carrigan Mahan, Cloisters, I'm a citizen in Morro Bay. I'm going to play the role of the closer here, I think. I concur with everything that has been stated thus far. This, with all the math and all the mumbo jumbo, this is silly. Let's look at this in an organic manner. This is the gateway to the Cloisters. And you're jamming five houses. Originally, it was six houses and the parking scenario was a mess. Two of the houses, you could not put residences, cars, in the driveways. So already two houses, four cars with nowhere to park. Guest parking is ridiculous. Four, in my opinion, is bordering on too much. Ideally, it would be two beautiful houses. Possibly three would be ideal. Now, I'm not suggesting that be the case, but four really should be the max because if you guys go out and look at that corner and kind of see how compromised the parking really is on the street up there, that corner. And that corner, believe it or not, is a little dangerous. I just watched a car the other day turn right in front of the fire truck off of Coral onto San Jacinto. And, you know, that whole area in there is, it's busy. You've got the beach, as was pointed out. You've got probably 300 or 400 houses coming on to San Jacinto from the old tract. And then, of course, the Cloisters. And that can get actually a little bunched up sometimes. And then with the four, with the five houses, even with the four houses, you've got eight cars. And ideally, you know, in the new, well, the plan that we've never seen anything since we met, anything. You really, to conform with the Cloisters properly, should have its own street. I mean, to house whatever guest parking. There's something that houses the cars inside that lot. As opposed to, you know, guests or kids or family, they're all going to be trying to park outside, you know, on Coral there. And there's really not any, there's not much room. There's nowhere to go. I don't think you have parking for maybe eight. Eight cars, then it starts going into Indigo Circle or you can't go down into the median. So this could become a real mess real fast. And I think the difference from four to five is huge. And I don't, you know, I'm not going to start getting into the money dynamics of, you know, how much the applicant's going to make or not make. But really, you know, the houses would be larger. They'd be more amenable and they would fit with the Cloisters much better. And again, I say, it's the gateway. So there you are. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next, please. Anybody else wish to?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Roger Ewing, resident of Morro Bay. And I've been watching this on the television. Thought I'd come down and lend my support to this group concerning this property. When the city decided not to build the firehouse there, the city gained an opportunity to have that intersection remain as beautiful as it is right now, with a clear view from all directions. Putting five two-story homes on this lot will literally destroy a scenic view, south and north, along Highway 1. I understand the need to develop and the need to make money and the pleasure in making profit. But there comes a point, I believe, in our community where we need to rise above just the money element. We need to recognize what we have as a community. The feelings, the beauty, the landmarks. We have a unique community here. Why would we want to keep destroying it by putting up homes for the sake of putting up homes? Can we ever come to a point where we can say enough is enough and just accept the beauty that we have, appreciate it, and keep it as is? For the benefit of all, for the future as well? I would really be disappointed driving down Highway 1 and having to face two-story homes as I approach one of the most beautiful areas of Morro Bay. So I urge you, please, heed what the residents of the Cloisters are telling you and recognize what we have as is. We really don't need five homes there. I've said enough. Thank you for listening.
Okay.
Make the right decision, please.
Okay, thank you very much. I think you're going to have to pull the microphone down.
My name is Nita Davis and I live in the Cloisters and I love it. And I'd like it to stay that way. I understand putting homes in and I think that four homes are appropriate. I think 90% of people in the Cloisters feel that four homes would be appropriate. What we do feel would also be appropriate is a real street like the rest of the Cloisters, not a driveway, but a real street that has parking on it. We need real two-car garages and there are very specific requirements for the setback on the garages and for the length of the driveways in the Cloisters. When we built our house, we had to follow those and we would appreciate them being followed again. followed again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please. Anybody else wish to speak to this item? Okay. Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the Commission. Okay, who's got some comments?
I have more questions for staff.
Okay.
If I can ask a couple more questions of staff. So forgive me for not knowing the history of the appeal. So the subdivision at the parcel in question, Lot 124, was appealed to the City Council. They were instructed to delay, discuss with the ARC. What is the status of that appeal at this moment?
City Council denied the appeal. So the city process was final. And then the appellant's, I think, approached the Coastal Commission and objected, and that's where we got disrailed. Initially, the Coastal Commission thought they could do an immaterial amendment to fix the lack of clarity in the land use plan, and then they felt that it required more.
One more question, if I may. Is, trying to word this carefully and correctly, is the city required to obtain the approval of the Cloisters ARC for a subdivision legally? I mean, I understand that their, the purpose of an architectural review committee is to design, you know, to approve elevations and color schemes and things of that nature, but I mean, I didn't realize that they were, they had jurisdiction or they had that type of authority.
Yeah, I mean, they're supposed to go through their ARC to get recommendations related to the proposed development, which has nothing to do with why we're here this evening.
Right.
But that is how their CCNRs are set up, and their CCNRs or their Articles of Incorporation, whatever, are set up to create an ARC, and there's requirements for how the board is set up and those types of things.
Okay. Joseph?
Returning to the narration of the series of documents on how the, quote, "mistake" came about, it's a pretty persuasive narrative, and it seems credible. Are you aware of any counterargument to the interpretation that the count should be 125 rather than 120?
No.
None?
And I went through 10 boxes of four or five years of testimony, meeting minutes, listening to tapes. So it was based on confirming for the California Coastal Commission what the intent was in all the discussions that led up to those approved text amendments.
Okay, Michael? Okay, I've got.
I have comments when you're done.
Okay, yeah. The question is, will the CCNRs apply to this subdivision?
Of course.
Okay. So the CCNRs on here have a minimum, if I remember them correctly, it's been a while, they have a minimum house size, they have a location where two-story houses can be constructed and only single-story houses can be constructed. This is outside either one of those zones.
I think this is restricted to single-story.
Okay. That was, that was one of the, one of the questions I had. The other question is, they had driveway setbacks and garage setbacks from the, from the street side. Will that be continued into this subdivision?
They're going to be subject to all of the same development requirements and lot size requirements as every other lot in the Cloisters.
Okay, when we had the previous subdivision map on this, we were talking about a separate PUD. So from what I understood.
It's a separate subdivision.
It was a separate subdivision that wasn't going to be confined by the CCNRs of the Cloister because it was.
No, it was going to be subject to all of the same CCNRs and all of the lot requirements, and it actually met all of the lot requirements other than the parking in front of the driveways or in front of the garages.
Okay. So then it came forward with a parking exemption. That was how they got the?
No, because the city doesn't require parking in your driveway.
Okay, but the CCNRs for the Cloisters did.
I don't, I'm, I'd have to look at that again. There's a lot of discussion about what, what the requirements are and what they're not. And certainly, when we get to that next phase, when they submit a revised plan, we will do a lot of homework on the CCNRs.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear that, because I wasn't clear before on the other subdivision map, that the CCNRs applied to this subdivision. And where I see that going from, and I guess I'm getting into comment at this point.
It's actually the Cloisters Design Guidelines, not the CCNRs.
The Cloisters Design Guidelines, I'm sorry. Usually, they're incorporated into the CCNRs, but I'm sorry. So because this is a density transfer, that makes it much more contingent on what the approval for the original subdivision was, in my, in my opinion.
What the action today is, is not saying where those five units will be used. It's just clarifying that the number should have been, it allows up to 125 total residential units in the Cloisters subdivision.
So the density allows, will allow up to five units on that, on Lot 124. Up to five units, if they can meet all the other conditions.
Correct.
For, for street, driveway and parking that all the other residences in the Cloisters were required to meet, correct?
Correct.
Okay, if, when it gets to that point.
Yes.
As, as we go forward. Okay, that was, I just wanted to clarify that for me. Okay. Any other comments?
I have one more question, I think. I'm just trying to, you know, logically go through this in my head and, okay, so obviously, we're doing this for a reason. We're going to get to a point where this, okay, so we do the text amendment, and hypothetically, we approve the text amendment. The next step would be, are we going to re-approve the existing subdivision that we've already approved and been, and have been denied on appeal?
They, yes, they would have to redesign and resubmit and go through the public process again.
And work with the Cloisters ARC group.
Yes.
To come up with that, and they may have to bring forward, you know, a letter from that board indicating their, you know, concurrence or lack thereof with the proposed design. While they said they didn't approve the previous project, they, we did have a letter from the representative of the ARC approving the design. If we had not had that, we wouldn't have come forward with it, but we had that letter. But it sounded like from talking with the ARC, we met with them a few different times, that they didn't feel that they had the full opportunity to review the project, and the person that they had appointed to be the lead for them eventually ended up resigning from that position, and now they have a new sort of lead on the ARC from the architectural standpoint. So, so anyway, I mean, so they'll be required to go through all that process, sit down and meet with the Cloisters ARC, whatever the newly formed body looks like, and whoever's represented in that, and, and obtain, you know, that sort of input, so.
And that's prior to the map, subdivision map coming back to us? Or does it just go to the subdivision committee? And do we have a subdivision committee?
It'll be part of their submittal requirements.
Okay. To the Planning Commission for review. Okay. Okay, I think I might understand it, probably not. Any other questions or comments?
Well, I, I, I mean, are you going to discuss it or?
Yeah.
Well, my comments would be first, to be clear, what we're not doing is, we are not changing in any way the density of that particular development. What we are doing is looking at some legal documents and concluding what the meaning of those documents are. And the fact that this, this agreement among parties is old and dense in no way voids what the agreement is, okay? Secondly, we're not making any decision in terms of the nature of the design of this development either. And that's why I asked what I thought was probably the most relevant question. Is there any way to dispute the conclusion of the personnel of the Community Development Office as to what the true meaning of this agreement was and is? And I'm at a loss at this point to say that there's an alternative meaning to what the agreement was with respect to this density. But this, but I also want to make another statement, and it was anticipated by Commissioner Lucas earlier in the meeting when he was talking about the combining of three lots into two lots. We're going to make our recommendation to the City Council, but I would really hope that partnered with that recommendation is that sometime in the very near future, the City Council examine this, the minimum lot size concept in the context of affordable housing. Now, I realize it's fairly bizarre to even address affordable housing in the context of the Cloisters development, but my point is that all the economic incentives seem to be in favor of building residential homes, albeit large residential homes, and hence expensive homes. And, and that's a major obstacle to affordable housing. And so I'd really, I would urge the City Council to reexamine its notion of what minimum lot sizes are, because that could go a long way to addressing this problem, which is chronic, not only for Morro Bay, but of course statewide.
I think we'll have an opportunity to address that when the Plan Morro Bay comes back to us.
So there's also, I mean, your, your timing is interesting. I've literally, we've been, Nancy and I have been working on the RFP for the Housing Element Update. We're probably at a point where we're a week or two away from releasing it to the public. And that's part of one of the things that they're, that we're requiring be analyzed as part of it, is, is how do we incentivize affordable housing? You know, what things are we looking at? Are we looking at removing all our one zoning and it'll all be multifamily zoning? I don't know. I, I mean, that's, some communities are looking at, you know, policies like that, you know, right now. So we'll be looking at those types of things in the context of meeting our requirements to the state Department of Housing, Community Development for arena numbers, regional housing needs assessment numbers. So that's all happening. I'm even going to have, I think, a presentation in September to the Council to speak a little bit to affordable housing and what we're, what process we're embarking on to answer some of those questions. So your, your comments are timely and something that is teed up for us to start working on and something that will be coming before your board, so. Little update.
And it's really been a hot topic for, from the state coming down, that, so for minimizing lot sizes, you know, we were, presently, we're at 6,000 square feet. The new plan dropped at five. It may be behoove us to look at different zones where those lot sizes are dropped even more. So, so we have a range of deals. But in this, this situation, I believe it's a 6,000 square foot lot, minimum lot size that is a minimum requirement. So, Jesse?
Yeah, my comments are, you know, so I think what we have to do here is, is kind of just look at it holistically. We, we're going to be either recommending or not recommending a favorable recommendation to the City Council regarding the text amendment. So we're not making any decisions here tonight other than correcting some text. So I just want to make sure that it's very clear what we're actually going to be voting on, and that's a text amendment to an LCP, so.
Okay, Michael?
Yeah, I was trying to think back in the, not 1016 or whenever the first subdivision was, but the, the first time I saw this on the Planning Commission a long time ago, they proposed a cul-de-sac with six lots, and I voted against it, I think, because, not because of the six, but because it almost guaranteed, the way they had laid it out, they're going to cut down every eucalyptus tree on that lot. And so I was against it for environmental reasons, so I'm very, I'm very sensitive to, you know, Citizen Ewing's concern for, for the environment there, as I am the residents. But I walk that all the time. I love that site, too. And I think some of the things that have been mentioned here, I don't see the Coastal Commission's going to help this at all. Coastal Commission's going to want access to the coast and higher density. And I think that the CDs, the design guidelines are in place, and even though it's going to be challenging, I, I, we sometimes see really great architecture come through here. Not all the time, but sometimes we see some really amazing results. And, and, you know, I, I was raised in the era where the Cloisters thinking was very new, and the idea that small lots, narrow side yards, almost no front yards, in a beach location like that was absurd in the 80s when they started thinking this way. And it's one of our most fantastic places. You know, size is meaningless, it's relationships that are important. So I will, I will throw my vote toward the future, having the possibility of a good design coming through, because we don't have a design to vote against yet. I don't think four is a magic number, I don't think five or six is a magic number. It's what they're going to do with it, it is. So I'd be willing to move this forward as it is.
Okay. I can, you know, I concur. And so basically, what my concern was, was this going to be incorporated into, seeing as as we're using residential credit density transfers to, for the allowance, then I think it needs to tie in with the existing infrastructure that the design guidelines and the CCNRs had established for the rest of the Cloisters development. So I think, you know, on this, as fair is fair. And so, okay, motion? Or any more discussion?
I'm ready for a motion.
Okay.
I remove that the Planning Commission adopt, Planning Commission Resolution 15-19 recommending the City Council adopt the proposed amendments to the Coastal Land Use Plan as indicated.
A second. Any discussion? Comments? Okay. Call the question.
Commissioner Lucas?
Hi.
Commissioner Barone?
Hi.
Commissioner Graffia?
Hi.
Chair Luer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Yeah, we're going to take a quick five minutes here, so apologize to you sitting out in the Okay, great. We're, we're ready to go again here, calling, calling the meeting back to order. We're on item number B3, case, case number MIN19-009. This is, site location is a 27.6 acre portion of a 396.3 acre parcel, APN number 073-101-017, located north of the South Bay Boulevard, State One Route interchange. All right.
Ready for a question?
You up, Scott?
Yep. Thank you, Chair Luer, members of the Commission. You have before you this evening the pre-zoning of the 27.6 acre water reclamation facility proposed site, currently located in the county. Pre-zoning of the site is necessary for the city to move forward with annexation proceedings to bring it inside the city. Property, again, is currently located in the county in zoned agriculture. We'd be looking to bring it into the city and zone it public facilities. City approval is required for the pre-zoning in order to move forward with the application process with LAFCO. LAFCO is the Local Agency Formation Commission and is the entity that we have to process annexations into the city through. So a little bit of the background, on June 25th of this year, Council approved Resolution 54-19 authorizing the filing of a combined application for sphere of influence designation change for that area and for annexation of the 27.6 acre site, which is the, again, the piece of the property on the Tri-W site that the city is looking to, to purchase. The property, again, is vacant, located off of South Bay Boulevard on the east side of Highway 1. I have some maps that'll show it to you at the end, so there's no question about that. So general plan, local coastal plan and zoning designations for the site, the So general plan, local coastal plan and zoning designations for the site, the property is identified in the city's draft land use map, you've all seen this, as public facilities, institutional. So the land use map is the general plan and local coastal plan land use map, not the zoning map. The city's draft zoning classification does include a public facilities zoning district, which is what we're looking to pre-zone the property to. The definition of that is that the PF's district is intended for facilities that serve the public, such as government buildings and service facilities, schools, hospitals, cultural centers and other public and quasi-public uses. Public facilities district implements the public and institutional general plan, local coastal plan land use designation. Here's a picture of the, the site. It's the Tri-W site, so it's the large green parcel at the top, existing zoning as agriculture in the county. We would be carving out that 27.6 acre area in blue there and bringing it into the city, again, with a public facilities zoning classification on it. And with that, recommendation is per California Government Code, the city may pre-zone unincorporated territory to determine the correct zoning for that property before annexation. And again, to this end, the council approved resolution 54-19 directing staff to submit an application to LAFCO for the annexation of that property. And to do that, part of that application requires pre-zoning. Staff is recommending planning commission adoption of resolution 18-19, which would forward a favorable recommendation to the city council to pre-zone the WRF site to public facilities PF. That concludes my presentation and staff report. If you have questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Questions? Jesse, you want to go first?
No questions.
You know, I, I had one question. It's really only kind of tangent on. It's a 27 acre site, and I recall that the city at one time was thinking about using a portion of the area as a rental, not a rental, as a storage facility and things like that. Does anybody know how much of the site is actually going to be used for the things that have to do with water reclamation?
Approximately 15 acres. And the remainder will be preserved as undeveloped area.
This is just a graphic thing, I think. It's meant that the property goes all the way to the edge of the property line. In the graphic, there's kind of a little...
It actually doesn't.
It doesn't?
It does not. It does look like that. There's an easement that runs along the side of it. A little bit foreshortened when I clipped it, I apologize for the kind of odd shape. It's a little, again, it's a little foreshortened there, but it does have that, there's an easement that provides access along that area back to the grazing land that sits behind it.
So that's, that's also along a stream bed?
Correct.
That's, that's part of the watershed?
Correct.
We didn't buy, we didn't explore buying part of the watershed to preserve the creek better?
Well, it's part of the, it's part of the easement that, you know, that we'll have access through.
Okay. That's all I've got.
So I'm just, got some odd questions here about easement access. Do we have easement access to this?
That's all part of the things that we're working through right now, working through the purchase process. It includes all of those types of easements for access, defines all of those things, all of those will be recorded along with the purchase process.
So we can bring power in and bring a road up in there and stuff without trouble?
Correct.
Has, has there been any geological studies on the site prior to the...
I believe we've had, we've done some out there. I don't know the status of any of that. Again, I'm not...
Everything's been a green light so far as far as...
Correct.
The stability, site stability and all, site stability and all of that?
Correct.
Okay.
To my knowledge.
So, and then the odd, odd size, the odd portion of it, or the odd shape of it, is that because of geographic considerations or is that...
So we didn't need, again, to annex all of it, but in negotiating with the property owner, they didn't want to create, you know, they wanted us to take, there's the hill that it sits there, and they wanted us to take that property as part of what we were doing, as opposed to have this flag looking thing. They said they'd want it to look, again, the shape is a little elongated because of how I snipped it, but it does look mostly like that. It's kind of that odd funky shape. And I had to do with negotiation with the property owner about what they, you know, wanted the lot to look like. And so will we, you know, again, 15 acres of it we're using and the remainder of it...
So that triangle section with the, with the easement along the side, that's so that they can get easement off of South Bay to the rest of their property? Okay.
And it provides, I think it provides some access potentially out there, because the adjacent property owner to the, to the east also has grazing, you know, grazes out there and then he can get out there as well. So, and he has a little strip of property at the beginning that we have to get an easement, I think, from him as well. So we have a couple of different property owners we have to get easements from.
Okay, Mike?
And this is just kind of procedural. When we annex it, it'll be after the county has done the permit process for all of this? Or does the annexation allow us to do the permits on it?
We have the discretionary permits, that was approved by coastal last week. And so the, the building permits won't be processed through the county, the county doesn't want any part of that. So we'll be, we'll be processing those out, those permits ourselves, you know, through the city. And whether it's annexed at that time, prior to that, or after, is just really sort of irrelevant. We're a government agency and can issue our own permits.
So in terms of the buildings and things like that, as they get developed, those will come here at some point?
No, no, that was all part of the consolidated coastal development permit that went to the coastal commission.
Okay.
They were, they were meant to be rural in character, as I remember.
And that is also one of the conditions added by the coastal commission. Correct. I think there was some concern, one of the visual sims had the buildings kind of being a white color at one point, and I don't think they liked it that much. And so you need a more...
So you're anticipating it would be something reasonably akin to what Los Osos built?
Yes, I mean, that's the intent. I mean, the condition, I think, mirrors Los Osos's condition.
Hmm, okay.
Okay, Scott, there was a, a statement in here that said, "The corresponding amendment to local coastal plan will occur through the Plan Morro Bay Combined General Plan, Local Coastal Plan Update Process." Are we going to have that certified in time for this?
So, so we were, we were hoping that it's, it's going down that, we're still working on the timing. And hopefully, working with the WRF team, that'll be a little better defined by the time we get to council on it.
So what happens if it's not, if our, if the plan isn't ready by the time we're needing to get approvals?
We would simply just submit it along, we would submit it to coastal along with, we have to also amend a, a service, a sphere of services line that goes around to this. And council will make that decision when we take it to them on the 27th, I think. So we'll speak with them about that process. They, we might be seeking direction from the council to submit this as a separate standalone amendment.
Okay, and so wouldn't we normally have a sphere of influence that would then, prior to an annexation?
The sphere of influence is part of the other, or part of the other resolution that went to council.
Okay.
So, so what could have happened is all of this could have went together. But I said usually we do pre-zoning and we take pre-zoning because the planning commission usually looks at zoning changes and things. I said, so normally as a, as a, as a part of practice, we bring this before the commission. So that's why we brought this forward to you. It could have went directly to council. We don't have anything in our regs that require it to come to you. That's just the practice that the city's followed and I like to adhere to that. Your, you know, land use authority is the, is the planning commission. And so it seemed appropriate to me to, to bring that portion of it here to get your input. And your input for making, the decision-making process for council. So that's why it's here.
Okay. At this point, I'll open up for a public comment.
I have three points. The first one is, has to do with probably the MOU. It seems to me if you're going to ask for annexation and it's not inside the city, well, you're asking for annexation, but you would want the permission of the property owner, but there's no letter in your packet that says the property owner says okay. But maybe that's the assumption of the MOU, is that the property owner wants it annexed. But I think what the property owner was want us to purchase it, but I don't think that relates to the annexation. Though I personally think that utilities should be annexed into the city. So ownership was a question. And then the other reason I'm speaking is, this has been the only hearing we've had on this project, and it's not even related to the project. So because it's the only hearing, I'm stepping forward to say I'm opposed to this project, this location, this site. I don't know if you saw the coastal commission meeting last week, but you, I hope you understand that only 30% of the design went coastal. And all the project, all the permits and other agencies that you would hope or say are giving the green light have not been approved. There's about seven state agencies, and none of them have said yes or given permission or said their authority, have given their authorization. Because this project is not designed, it's not complete. It went to this consolidation process and it's, it's not there. And so they approve something that doesn't exist, in essence. And so that's why I'm standing up here to oppose this.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I'd also like to express my concern, just in terms of the process, how this has been a matter of limiting local input at this point, as Betty stated. The other thing, just relative to annexation, I know a lot of people in the community were concerned that the road that the city is, is contributing here is, would be exclusive for the city and not to the benefit of the landowners, of the landowner. And I think that really has to do, again, just with fear within the community, I don't know unfounded or not, but fear within the community that the road that will be established will further encourage annexation that could contribute to, a lot of people's concern within the community about that ultimately ending up in a residential situation. Thank you.
Okay, I think you have more time. I think, I don't think that got reset. If there's anything else you wish?
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Oh, no, that's fine. 24 second clock. Does anybody else wish to speak? Okay, great. All right, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission. So Scott, is there any, any of those comments you'd like to address?
I would respectfully disagree with Ms. Winholt's. There have been, we've had several public meetings on this, we've had public hearings related to the environmental documents. We've had public, was a public meeting we had when the, where the project was approved at the coastal commission. So that was a public hearing. We've had, I think, 50 plus, maybe closer to 60, public meetings on the WRF and numerous additional comments during public comment at city council meetings. I, I mean, this is probably the most discussed project that's gone before the city in a very, very long time.
Okay. And then about the road access, and is that, is that determined at this point?
The road access, I mean, they're working through the, you know, what exactly that's going to look like. It is part of the approval?
Is it a public road? Could, is there going to be parklands there?
The question right now is whether they, they separate access into, it's a shared road that goes by there and then the adjacent property owner has access on that to go out there? Or it's, the road's bifurcated and the easement for them specifically goes, you know, out there. We would build the road, I would imagine, for them to get out there to the grazing area that's out there. And I'm not sure, again, I haven't specifically looked it out, I'm not sure where, what the final decision was on that.
Can, is, the adjacent properties, are they in Williamson Act?
Not that I know, eh, I can't speak to that. I'm not sure. They're agricultural land, most of the land out there is, is non-irrigated grazing land, so non-prime ag land, at least in the general vicinity of this. I don't know what happens when you get out further beyond that.
And so because the facilities are going to be out there, is that going to allow the county to essentially develop, to allow development out in there on the ag, ag portion? Or how does, how would that work?
For the county to do anything, they'd have to have agreements for us to provide them services. And most of our land use documents suggest that we don't provide services outside of our city limits, although we do have some exceptions to that that exist out there now, where we provide water service and some other things.
Yeah. We got some in Choral, Choral Basin or something too.
We have a couple of different properties out there that we serve water. We have a couple of properties that we own that have wells and things on them outside city limits.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Any comments or suggestions?
I want to second Scott's assessment of the public meeting process. I mean, we've, we've, we've been over this and over this and over this. I mean, there's been a lot of time for the public to comment, the public to contribute to the conversation. And I get that we don't agree on this as a community, but I, I mean, I have to, I have to say that we have had ample opportunity to comment throughout this process.
One thing I would comment on that is I just haven't, I haven't seen any design, preliminary design.
There's quite a bit of information available on the website. There's, I don't know if there's a finalized plot plan, but there's preliminary site plans that have been, at least, well, at least the layout is relatively, I don't want to say set.
And I would, my concern is this is a public facility that is not coming through the city's planning commission. That's, that's, that's my biggest concern about this whole process. But I can understand they raised, the need for speed. So, okay. Michael, do you have any comments or do you want to make a motion?
No, I...
Joseph?
Well, I did have a couple things.
Okay.
Again, stating the obvious, this meeting has nothing to do with discussing the, the utility, whether necessity of the water reclamation plant and how it's designed or where it's located. We're just, we're talking clearly about the annexation. And to my thinking, you know, the, the elephant in the room, or the, or the acknowledged elephant in the room is how best to preserve the land that might be annexed and the adjacent land and keep it agricultural and undeveloped. And, you know, there's a couple, a couple of thoughts I have. It's, it's a kind of an undecided question as to, you know, what, what entity, county or city, might be the best safeguard that that land is preserved, because ideologies and the complexion of respective government boards change. On the other hand, you can say, well, the larger the government entity, the more likely it is to be able to, to resist the advances of development. But, you know, on balance, the plant costs so much that I think it would be beyond foolish for the city of Morro Bay not to have the most direct control over the operation of the plant. So I think annexation is an absolute necessity. The, the issue I have though is, you know, we have to acknowledge that the development of that property, necessary, unnecessary, partly necessary, will weaken the argument about how that area must be kept undeveloped because we're locating a sizable development there. So I would, again, I would really want to recommend to the city and to the city officials constantly, when they decide how to design the plant, that they be as judicious as possible, as compact as possible. And that with respect to the other land that they're acquiring, but intend to keep as open space, that that really be kept as open space. Because any other uses will just go a long way towards weakening the absolute necessity to keep that property and adjacent property undeveloped. And in a sense, what I'm saying is that the city has to lead by example, in the example of being really dedicated to preserving that entire area as agricultural land.
Okay, Mr.? Michael?
Yeah, I want to second the, the chair's concerns that, you know, this is, this is a site that even though it's kind of in a fold on the north side of Route One, it is the entrance to the city in some ways and certainly will be visible from a lot of the major roadways. And I'm a little concerned we won't see more of what's planned there. I don't have any trouble with the, you know, reviews that have, that have gone forward. You know, I, I share Ms. Winholt's concerns about, I wish it was on a different site. But I, I, I'm back and forth. I mean, the county didn't want us to annex things 10 years ago because they were afraid they would be developed because of our council's pro-development kind of thing and 12 years ago. And so they kept everything tight, you know? And now I think it's the opposite. I think the county's the one I'm more concerned developing things versus what we would, what we would see. But good luck trying to sell high-end residential units next to a sewer plant, so.
So just, you know, some, some random comments here. You know, once again, I would rather seen it in my backyard on the Regetti property. I think that was a much more appropriate site, a lot cheaper, more energy efficient. And... site, a lot cheaper, more energy efficient. And the other thing is that, you know, part of what I was looking for is local control, is, you know, we do have an opportunity here. There is a water source there. There is, there is, you know, you have a, you have a pristine, although it's been grazed, site that could be developed as a public facility, a public source. Sand, you know, I grew up around Santee, and Santee had their water reclamation lakes that now that's where, there's a series of seven ponds, and now that's where everybody goes fishing, and they play, they play baseball all around there. That's all where all the ball fields are. It's become a, it's become a gem, and people don't even know that that's their wastewater treatment plant. But, so that's was my always, you know, I think that's the opportunity lost here, and that's why I would like to see a little more, a little more plan review, a little more design review that, that comes forward to this, this body. But at this point, we're dealing with the annexation. I think it needs to go forward. So that's where I stand. If we've talked this out, do we have a motion?
I'll move that, this commission forward a favorable recommendation to city council for approval by adoption of motion, including the following action: Adopt Planning Commission Resolution 18-19 for the project as described in the staff report and depicted in Exhibit B.
Second?
No, second.
Discussion? Okay, call the question.
Commissioner Graffia?
Hi.
Commissioner Barone?
Hi.
Commissioner Lucas?
Hi.
Chair Lohr?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Motion passes for zero.
Thanks, everybody. Okay, moving forward, item C, new business. We have none. Unfinished business, too much to list here. Planning commissioners' comments and future agenda items?
Do have one comment I want to make. So there was some actionable activity with coastal commission regarding the water reclamation facility, and as such, there will be a water reclamation facility, Citizens Advisory Committee, I believe it's still called, not Action Committee, on the 6th of August, which is the first Tuesday of August, and they usually start at 3 o'clock, and they usually run until 5 o'clock. So please, if you're interested, keep your eyes open for an agenda and some possible documents to, to peruse, and then please make your comments known at that meeting.
The 6th of August, I believe.
This is the date of your next planning commission meeting.
Okay. Is it going to be here in this building?
I believe it's at the, is it here? It's usually at the Community Development Center.
The Community Center?
The Community Center.
I'm not sure. I guess maybe it is there, yeah.
Okay. Okay, any, any other comments? So, question Scott, you know, where are we with a couple items? You know, where are we with the, the plan, and where are we with our community design, especially commercial design guidelines?
So where we're at on Plan Morro Bay, we've finally gotten through about five months of back and forth with the coastal commission on comments on Plan Morro Bay, which is the General Plan Local Coastal Program Combined draft. We finished that literally a week ago, two weeks ago, sorry. And the consultant team is working on addressing all of the concerns, reformatting the document a little bit. Coastal was requesting some formatting changes to it, which I think actually helped the clarity of the document, which I liked. And working on incorporating all of the comments, that were the 300 and something comments that came out of planning commission, and 120-something comments, I think, that we got out of G-PAC. So, yeah, we're probably, probably three, probably three, four weeks away from getting an internal final draft back, which, point staff will go through it. Probably take about a week, week and a half for us to finish that. And then we'll start rolling out and having public hearings for you, for the planning commission to start talking about it. I would envision, you know, a few meetings for you to get through it all, with the end result, your recommendation to the city council for adoption. The zoning code has been in coastal's hands since October, and I think they might have started looking at it this week.
Okay.
Yeah. Their process, probably not the best. They're constrained from a staff resource standpoint, so couldn't be running on multiple levels reviewing our documents. We probably had, going over their comments on, on Plan Morro Bay, I would say eight or nine, maybe 10 conference calls with everybody, consultants, coastal commission staff, going through what their comments were, what they meant, and that type of thing. It was a little messy, the way that they commented the second round, second time around. They commented initially on our admin draft, and then on the public draft. But I think the good thing is, you know, we're having really good conversations with them, and so we have really clear, you know, I think, direction on where they, they want us to be, and they have real clear direction on the things that we need to have in the document. So there's been a lot of back and forth on it, which I think was a pretty collaborative process, even though it was kind of messy. So I'm, but I'm hopeful that once we get the revised draft back, we'll have probably a couple of conversations with coastal staff before, you know, coming before this body, but I'm hoping that it'll be mostly ready for primetime, and, you know, if we can get it through planning commission and city council, that there won't be much in the way of revisions when we send it off to coastal. We've had a long and, you know, engaged process with them over the last four years. We've met with them several times, lots of phone calls, been out to, up to Santa Cruz five times, I think. They've been here a couple of times. I mean, it's, it's been a lot. So, but I mean, I think we're, you know, we're rounding the bend and, you know, heading towards the finish line, I think, at this point. So, and they said they probably have us comments on the zoning code within the next couple of months. So they said it should be a lot shorter turnaround on that document for us, and they're going to edit it in a different format, where, what they did, they edited it in track change format, which is nice, but they didn't give us context to the changes, which makes it difficult to figure out why they're making the change, because sometimes they would move stuff out of the implementation section and put it in policy, and they're like, "Why'd you do that?" And so we had, that's a lot of the conversation, was getting clarity as to, you know, what was expected there. And so hopefully, and they've agreed not to do that. If there's issues they have related to how format, how the zoning code's formatted, they'll reach out to us upfront and ask us those questions, so we don't have that. And then they'll do track changes with comments, so we understand what's happening.
So they're going to be able to use this as a template for other communities?
Um, it's turned out that's the case. I didn't realize that, you know, I mean, the grants have been out there for a while, and that's what precipitated all these changes, right? For LCPs on the coast of California, we have, you know, three grants, one Ocean Protection Council, and two coastal commission grants to update it and address sea level rise and climate adaptation, and roll that into the document, which we've done. And we are out there in front of a lot of other communities, and we're probably one of the few that are doing comprehensive updates to our documents, and comprehensive reformatting of them, so they're more user-friendly. So, I, you know, I didn't, I never liked, you've probably heard me say this enough, I don't like being the guinea pig. I was happy when we didn't roll out on cannabis right out, out at the gate. We kind of slow rolled that, let everybody else get out in front, make the mistakes. We learned from that, and then our process is a little more smooth. Would have preferred that to be the case here, but it seems like we're out in front, and they're pointing others to our documents that are online right now, to look at commentary they provided us, and to process, and what they like things to look like and what they don't. So it is what it is. What was the other, I'm sorry, what was the other?
How was the, the commercial and community design guidelines?
Um, I mean, I think we have to get through Plan Morro Bay.
Right.
And we're also starting the housing element right now, so we have to get through those, and then the, the vacation rental requirements. Would also let you know, since we're at a public forum, that we are, we're going down the road to hire outside company, host compliance, to help us monitor vacation rentals in the city. And so we're in the contract kind of negotiation process with that right now, and so they'll help us, you know, ensure that we only have the, you know, 250 in our residential zones. They help us with a little bit of the enforcement process with it, which is nice. And, you know, we'll probably be looking at a little bit of a change to our business license fees for those folks, because they'll be the ones that are, that are kind of paying for it, but it's not too expensive, so.
Scott, did I see, maybe it was in the, in the consent calendar of all of the projects, did I see something there that the coastal commission rejected the, not being able to use the secondary unit as a vacation rental? I don't know if I read that in the paper, or, everything's getting very foggy this time of night.
Um, I mean, I mean, related to a city out there, or something?
Yeah, I think so. I was very concerned that they, they were thinking the vacation rentals are access to the sea, and that kind of can, conflicts with the affordability thing that I'm seeing from other parts of the state.
I don't know. I mean, I've had a lot of conversations with PISMA. In fact, while we were at the coastal commission, PISMA added a, you know, an amendment to their vacation rental policy that went before the commission was approved, sort of making it explicit in their, in their code where vacation rentals are allowed in the downtown, and can you have them, or at least the home stay portion of them, in R2 and R3 zones, when you have single-family homes in R2 and R3 zones. And so they did some clarification there, had kind of extensive conversations with, with them. I know Grover's, Bruce Buckingham, been talking with him as well. They're getting ready to bring theirs forward. I want to say it might be going to the, the August meeting of the coastal commission for certification. I mean, I know they've submitted it. And there's, you know, largely deals with them in residential neighborhoods as home stays, you know, in some of the other neighborhoods where you allow transient occupancy-type uses, more commercial or mixed-use areas, you know, allows them in those neighborhoods. And coastal commission's mostly been fine with that. They haven't been, you know, trying to open up too much beyond that, as long as you're providing a mechanism that allows some of these types of things, because they do believe they provide affordable accommodations within the city. So, yeah, I think they've been mostly amenable. And they're even amenable, if you're allowing them enough places to have some caps, which I was surprised, because they were kind of like, no caps. But they've even allowed some of the cities to come forward with those. I think Grover's has a cap of like 100, you know, and part of it's in the coastal zone, part of it's, part of that city is in the coastal zone, and part of it's outside of it. So it was like, 40% of those, you know, would be in the coastal zone, I think 60 outside or something. Obviously, that portion outside doesn't require certification from coastal, but that's what the city manager was telling me last Friday when I was talking with him for the city of Grover Beach, so.
Okay. There was a, I just want, kind of wanted to make a comment. I read a study about a, a tiny home subdivision for, for, you know, homeless veterans, that this, this nonprofit has been developing in Oklahoma City. And it was, it was a transitional, transitional housing that, you know, based on a tiny home community concept, which their results were pretty, you know, pretty incredible, you know, preliminary results, where they were being able to transition these homeless veterans back into the community and to permanent housing through this shared facility. So it's just, you know, I don't know, that's not going anywhere, but I just thought it was a...
That's actually a good point, and one that I would say, you know, we're, again, we're getting ready to start the housing element. One of the things I'm asking the consultant to evaluate that we end up hiring is, you know, what impact can tiny homes have for us related to affordable housing? Should we have policies that are explicit to that, as opposed to an overarching policy that's kind of in the documents right now, the draft ones, anyway, that, you know, allow you to do unique things, you know, through different processes? Maybe we just explicitly say, "We can have these types of things," and so we're asking them to evaluate that. We're asking them to evaluate, you know, how do we preserve, you know, our mobile homes in town, and that type of thing, and are there other policies we should be looking at, and should we be updating our mobile home rent control ordinance? It's kind of old. So there's, I'm asking them to evaluate some of those things, and part of what the housing element also evaluates is transitional housing. So there's a little bit of synergy that could take place there. So, I mean, don't lose the thought, because we'll be coming back before you with, you know, conversations about the housing element, and we'll be having workshops on it and those types of things. So I think, I hope the community's really engaged in this. We've been having this conversation for a while. It's a concern that's come up through all of our planning efforts to date. You know, I'm kind of looking forward to seeing what some of the newer ideas are that are out there, that we might be able to implement, because we're constrained, right? We're mostly built out. We have to go to a vote of the citizens, the way our ordinance and referendum in the past in the 80s was written, you know, if we want to annex land for any purpose other than public, which is why we can annex the WRF site, but we can't annex anything else unless the citizens say that it's okay and vote for it. So we need to be, you know, I think, a little bit on the cutting edge of new policy, to do the infill development, to get the, you know, the units that we need to meet, you know, our housing needs for our community, so.
Okay. This is your shot, community development director's comments?
I think I gave you lots of comments as part of that. I think I'm done.
Okay, unless anybody has anything else, then we'll adjourn to the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting at the Veterans Memorial Building, 209 Surf Street on August 6th, I guess right after the WRF CAT meeting, and we'll be at 6:00 PM.